Good evening, Commissioners. It is approximately 5:15, so we'll call this meeting of the Clovis City Commission to order. I'd like to welcome all of those that have joined us in person this evening. I'd also like to thank those that are viewing online for your interest in following tonight's business during the meeting. We'll begin with a word of prayer and honoring our flags. If you would, please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings that you give us each day. Thank you for our wonderful community. We thank you for the privilege of living, working, and serving here, and ask that you would guide and direct us as we make decisions concerning the benefit and welfare of our community this evening. Lord, we thank you for the leaders that you've called into service, and we pray that you would bless our meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen. Please honor, or please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of our friendship among united cultures. Our meeting is called to order. Ms. Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Casaus.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Commissioner Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Rowley.
Here.
Commissioner Paula.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here. Thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Commissioners, next is approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull on the consent agenda. I'd like to pull number three off and move it to new business.
Okay. We will do just that. We will move that to new business. Commissioners, do you recommend rearranging or removing any of the other items?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, second from Commissioner Madrid. Commissioners, please vote. Would, oh, Commissioner Garza, could I have your vote, please?
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And the vote is eight to zero unanimous. The motion is carried, and our agenda has been approved, and I will remember that Commissioner Garza has joined us and asked for his vote on the action items. Thank you. Next is approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the Thursday, February 17th, 2022 meeting in your packet. Have you had a chance to review those? If so, do you recommend corrections to that, or is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes from the February 17th meeting from Commissioner Paula, and second from Commissioner Rowley. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, could I have your vote, please?
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Next, we have recognition of visitors, and again, would like to thank those of you that have joined us this evening, and anyone who may be viewing online, and anyone that may have joined our meeting virtually that may be participating. Thanks for being here. Next, we have proclamations, awards, and presentations. We have one planned presentation this evening, and it is presentation of plaque to Paul Leclerc, and our Parks Director, Russell Hooper, will share with us on this.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor. Thank y'all for allowing me to be up here. I'd like to talk a second about Paul Leclerc. He recently, you can come on up, Paul. You're going to be in the spotlight here. He recently retired from the city. He came up just short of 30 years, I believe. He was doing that home stretch and decided to pull up lame. But he is, he started July 26th, 1992. His last day was February 25th of 2022. From everything I can gather, because obviously he was here long before me, he's worked at Hillcrest, he's worked at the Par Three, he's worked at Roy Walker, he has worked at Ned Houck, he has done some work at the zoo. He's pretty much covered everything in our park maintenance division. Had a lot of people that talked about his dedication and hard work over the years. He's a plumber, he's welding, he he's been over at Hillcrest since I've been there, just kind of take care of the whole park. And then I find out later, it's like, well, what does Paul do all day long? You know, I really don't know. I mean, the park looks good, and then I start hearing the stories. Well, yeah, we took a mower over to get it fixed, and we took something over to get welded, and Paul got it together, and recently I went over there and he's got his, all his tools mounted on the walls and everything coordinated and just he's been there and he's done that for years and years, and I really appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Leclerc, thank you for 30 years of service. On behalf of the citizens of Clovis, we owe you a debt of gratitude, and it sounds like we will miss you severely based upon what Mr. Hooper just shared. I'll make my way down to give you this plaque, but Commissioners, any comments that you have, please fire away.
Paul, congratulations. Hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
Paul, thank you for 30 years. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Paul, for 30 years. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Paul, thank you, sir, for your service to the city, and thank you for a job well done. We will miss you.
Mr. Hawalt.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I'd be remiss if I didn't formally introduce to you our new Police of Chief of Police.
A new policeman?
Chief Rice. He actually was our former Deputy Police of Chief. Man, that one's a tongue twister this season. He actually has 34 years of law enforcement experience and was most recently the Chief of Police in Muleshoe, Texas, and so he came to us originally as a community relations officer before he was being promoted to Deputy Chief, and so I know that I am certainly happy and excited to have him and his leadership leading our police department. I certainly do look forward to what he's going to do with them. He's already started in the road running. He had, he actually invited me to one of their supervisors' meetings the other day, and it's the first time that I have been cordially invited to the supervisors' meeting, and and for me, it was a great learning experience, and I certainly do appreciate him involving myself in that, and it shows me what he's already doing for our police department, and I think that the future looks wonderful to them, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to formally introduce him and allow you to have any comments that you may have. So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, our new Chief of Police, Mr. Rice.
Welcome, Chief.
One thing he didn't mention is he doesn't let me speak because once I get going, I don't stop. But thank y'all very much for letting me have this honor because it isn't, you know, we talked about the retirement from other places, but when I saw when our Fracha came here two and a half years ago, it re-intrigued me in law enforcement, got me re-energized in what we were doing here and what we could do, what's possible here. And when this opportunity came forward and presented itself, it was such an honor to be able to come for the final selection and then make the position. I promise I'll do the best I can. I know the white snow on the top of the head makes it a little bit different for the younger guys, but I hope I have something I can bring to y'all and make you proud of. Thank you for your trust.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, we are on to receipts of petitions and communications. Is there anyone from the public that has something they wish to bring before the Commission this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on then to the consent agenda. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to approve or acknowledge by one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all Commission members, or if a citizen so requests, that item will be heard when reached under the regular agenda. Before approving tonight's agenda, we removed item number three. So that leaves us with seven items on the agenda, consent agenda, that is. The first is the motion to place, the seventh is the motion to approve or acknowledge. I will read the items now, beginning with item two. Item two is request for approval of adoption of Resolution Number 3108-2022, declaring the eligibility and intent of the City of Clovis to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Local Government Transportation Project Fund, Sugar Beet Road, and approving matching funds if awarded. Item three, request for approval to enter into agreement with UniFirst for uniform services. Item four, request for approval of budget transfer of $27,022.78 to purchase a Dell server and multi-year support for the City of Clovis. Item five, request for approval to renew the lease agreement on city-owned land adjacent to Cannon Air Force Base to Mr. Ernie Wright. And item six, request for approval of letter of support for Curry County regarding their T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application. Commissioners, that is your consent agenda. I would now entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
Motion to place.
Second.
Motion to place from Commissioner Madrid, second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried, and the items have been placed on the consent agenda. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda from Commissioner Burns, second from Commissioner Elliott. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you. Nothing to deal with under Sections 10 nor 11 of the agenda, so we are on to new business where we have two items now. And the first is request for approval of adoption of 2022 Clovis Carver Library Policy Manual. And to share with us on that is our Library Director, Ms. Margaret Henchy. Ms. Henchy, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to talk about the library manuals, the library policy manual. These are really the guts that make our library run. My library board reviews them once a year, once a year at our January meeting. We have made several revisions this time. It appears through the history of my discussion with Mr. Morris and with Justin Clear, that it has been a long time since this policy has been approved. So I don't know, Mr. Morris, if you've actually had time to look at it?
Thank you, if I may, Mayor.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Sure. I have, I've looked at specific sections of it, and I've done a brief review. It's 75 pages in length. A lot of them are blank pages intentionally between sections. But there are certainly some intellectual property issues that I would appreciate some more time to look into if we could. But other than that, I've reviewed it. I believe I won't have any changes, but I could potentially use some more time to look into some other issues.
Oh, that's fine. I'm in agreement. I'm sure the board will be fine with that, too.
Yes, thank you. So do I understand that perhaps we should consider tabling?
Yes, and as the chairman of the policy of the library board, that was my thoughts as well to have Mr. Morris review this before it's being presented to the Commission. So yes, I will make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to table or postpone this item until the second meeting in March, and that motion came from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, the second from Commissioner Madrid. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look forward to meeting with you guys on the 17th of March.
Sounds great. Thank you, Ms. Henchy. And the vote was unanimous, and that the item has been postponed until the second meeting later this month. Thank you. So still under new business, we have one other item there, and it is request for approval of a restaurant liquor license to be located at 600 Pile Street. Mr. Morris?
Thank you again, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. So Shogun Steakhouse here in Clovis obviously has had a liquor license for a number of years, but due to a change in ownership of their corporation that operates and runs Shogun LLC, or Shogun's Steakhouse, and the name of the corporation is listed in your packet. I won't even take a stab at pronouncing it, but the corporate structure has changed, in my understanding, such that the prior principal owner, Stephen Yan, has transferred his ownership interest to Spencer Yan, his son. And so because of that, the State of New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Department has required them to apply again for a liquor license. If you recall that when they started this process a little over a year ago, we were asked to consider whether or not we would also require a new site distance waiver. That location is 265 feet from a church, namely Legacy Life Family Church, and so the Commission voted not to require a new site distance waiver. So this evening, it will just be a public hearing on the granting of the liquor license for the reasons that I've mentioned. The criteria that the Commission must consider at the public hearing is does a specific applicant or the specific location pose a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare? If so, then that's grounds to vote the item down. But with that, if there aren't any further questions, I would turn it over to you, Mayor, to open up the public hearing.
Great. Commissioners, I need a motion and a second to enter the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Okay. Motion to open the public hearing came from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Paula. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried, and we have now entered the public hearing. If there's anybody wishing to give testimony, I believe you'll need to be sworn in, and we would hear from you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, second from Commissioner Paula. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous, and we have closed the public hearing. We're back to the item before us.
I move for approval. Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Paula, second from Commissioner Casaus. What is before you is the approval of a restaurant liquor license to be located at 600 Pile Street. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Garza, your vote, please.
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have six in favor, excuse me, seven in favor, one no vote. The motion is carried, and the restaurant liquor license has been approved. Thank you. Next, in the agenda, we have reports of boards, officers, and committees. There have been several board meetings and committee meetings over the last couple of weeks, so I look forward to hearing reports on each of these. The first is the LITA for Retail Task Force that met on Monday, February 21st, and on March 2nd. Mr. Hawalt or Ms. Burrows, do you want to take the report on this?
Certainly, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. And after looking down the list here, it's like, oh, my goodness. I realize I'm going to be reporting on some of these this evening, so as you mentioned, the LITA Task Force did meet in February and begin in March here. And as we're working towards developing and revising the ordinances, our economic development ordinances, to allow for that use of retail that was approved by the voters. So at the initial meeting there in February, we approved some changes to the ordinance that would need to occur to allow the use of the funds to be actually allowed for retail. Then in our February, or in our March meeting, we started to look at the policies. And so what we did was we took the existing policies that were in place for incentivizing industry and just started to redline those as the basis of what it could potentially look like for the retail sector. And so what we envision is two sets of policies, one obviously for industrial economic development and the one from a retail standpoint. So we're still in the beginnings of this. We've looked at proposed incentives of up to amounts of rebating gross receipts tax that is earned based off of the value of the land, buildings, and infrastructure improvements that were necessary in order to bring in a certain retailer. And so we're getting close to being able to make a recommendation to the Economic Incentive Board on what that could potentially shape out to be and look like, but we continue to work towards those efforts of getting there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions regarding the LITA Task Force? Looking forward to seeing that, that policy shaped and brought before you very soon. We'll give Mr. Hawalt a break. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to report on the hospital board meeting?
I can.
Okay.
Glad to. We did have a hospital board meeting on February 23rd, and we introduced a new Finance Director, Mr. Philip Rivera, which was, replaced Mark Lansford, who recently retired. They're continuing to work on recruitment of physicians and also retention of physicians, working on a compensation package for general surgeons, which is good news. In the process of getting things back to normal as close as possible with at the time of the meeting, we only had six COVID patients in the hospital. We are now doing elective surgeries. We do have an orthopedic surgeon starting in March and a urologist in April. Talked some regarding services in the ER and having better communication with patients that are waiting to be seen and or waiting in their cars to be seen. Overall, it was a good meeting and provided some good information. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I noticed that the Civil Aviation Board meeting doesn't appear to be in the printed list there, but the Civil Aviation Board did meet yesterday evening. That meeting was moved due to the municipal election. Normally, that would have been on Tuesday evening, but the Civil Aviation Board met yesterday, Wednesday. The no action items, nothing, nothing came from that meeting that you can expect to see coming before you soon. It was largely reports from our airport director. As you all know, there's a lot of positives going on with the airport, and he had a lot to share in the way of updates on, you know, the fencing project, the lighting project that you approved recently, the self-serve fueling, which is now up and running and seeing some success. And then he also talked about, as did Mr. Hawalt, talk about new potential grant opportunities through the FAA with an airport terminal grant program that's available. Largely, great news, great activity, great momentum going on with, with the airport. So then we'll go back to the list here. We had the Economic Incentive Board, which met on February 23rd. Mr. Hawalt, did you want to take that one?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. The one action item that we did have for the Economic Incentive Board was, of course, appointing a member of that board to the Steering Committee that was put together for our Economic Development Plan Review with TIP Strategies. That board did elect to appoint Mr. Joseph Blashke to be their representative on that Steering Committee, and we actually, as you can see down here, had the kickoff meeting on March the 2nd. And so that kickoff meeting went very well. We had close to 25 participants total, ranging from Curry County to the school district, to the obviously, the elected officials, as well as Clovis Community College. And so we had a great representation of everybody that you would expect to have some type of input when you're developing an economic development plan, and you start thinking about what your workforce needs are. So it was a great meeting. TIP Strategies went through several slide presentations regarding what the trends are economically across the country from the past to currently, and so it's off and running, and then looking forward to going through that process and ending up with what our new economic development plan could, could look like. Also, at the, and I segwayed into there, but now I'm going to jump back, at the Economic Incentive Board. Of course, we did hear some reports, the financial report I provided to them on the status of the fund, as well as Mr. Kent Carruthers provided an update for the CED, the Close Economic Development Corporation, because they had a name change from CIDC to the CED. They've actually issued three proposals to the New Mexico, or responded to three proposals put out by the New Mexico Partnership and continue to work to find industries to come to our, to our community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on items B and F.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Hawalt. And yes, it'll take some getting used to, to say CED instead of CIDC, which tends to just roll off the tongue, but great that they've updated their name there. Any, any comments or questions for Mr. Hawalt or anyone regarding those two meetings? Exciting stuff. I think the TIP Strategies Steering Committee is just very important because having that assessment and plan completed, the finished work of that, that, that project is going to be, you know, a guiding document for is going to be, you know, a guiding document for us for economic development for years to come. Very, very exciting. So thank you for those of you that are serving on that and putting time in.
And Mayor?
Yes.
In talking with TIP Strategies during the course of the week, they are planning to make their final presentation to you on July the 21st. So that's when the document will be brought to you.
That's when we'll have the plan. Thank you for that, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate that. Next, would someone like to report on Public Works?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I dropped the ball on this one and left my notes and the agenda and everything else in my office. And so I'm going to refer to Mr. Hawalt and him give us a report.
I'm happy to.
Mr. Hawalt, can we pause for a moment, and I'll just remind you about the meetings where you hardly say a word? We're making up for it tonight, okay?
It's always a pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Of course, the Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, February 23rd, and the lone action item that was heard at that meeting was regarding the application for the local government road fund, in which you guys took action on this evening as far as the resolution was concerned for us to apply for funding for Sugar Beet and to restore that pavement in that area essentially next to Cook's Truck Stop, where we've seen a lot of failures within the roadway. They also were provided a map of funds or roadways that qualify underneath the NMDOT's Municipal Arterial Program. And so we wanted the committee to start thinking about projects along those qualified roadways that we could be potentially applying for when that application cycle begins to open. The group also heard updates regarding the progress on Seventh Street and that next phase of that project. The North Street project from 21st Street going north to Yana Estacado Boulevard. FEMA, if you all recall, we submitted our application to revise the FEMA flood plane. We have received our round of comments back from the reviewers, and so we're currently working to address those to resubmit to FEMA for their second review on that. We heard updates on the Purdue and Eccles Project. We heard updates on the, regarding the Dam Safety Bureau. And so that's one of my favorite ones. And then the reuse project currently, and of course, the Yana Storm Drain Project as well. And then finally, we discussed various ways in which we could potentially look at speed control options for our roadways and what different techniques are out there that have been developed by the FHWA. So the fact that Albuquerque City of Albuquerque actually has a neighborhood traffic calming manual that they've put out, and so which reflects what FHWA has also produced. So we're going to start taking a look at that and thinking about what those options could look like. Should we make some changes to our design standards for our proposed subdivisions as they come on board, et cetera? So that's what happened at the Public Works Committee.
Very good. Thanks for backing Mayor Protem up on that one. Nice job.
Yes.
I'm sure he would have done it much better.
Thanks for stepping in.
You know you had it as well, Mayor Protem. Thank you. Appreciate you. Next, I'll give a quick report and invite Commissioner Garza or Mayor Protem to add anything they'd like to the report on the Water Utility Authority meeting. Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority Board met on February 24th, as we normally do, over in the Sitterly Professional Building. The agenda included approval of monthly financials, also new business items such as presentation and request for approval, which was granted for the annual audit. Deon Willoughby, CPA, conducted the audit of the Water Utility Authority, and it was one of the cleanest audits she'd ever done, was her comment. And there were no findings, and she commented that the, that the Water Authority has very strong internal controls and finances are in a great order. So that's very encouraging. We also appointed an evaluation committee for the Water Authority's insurance needs and made some, approved amendments to the engineering services contract. As the activity has ramped up due to the increased funding coming from both the federal government as well as the state, there's been a need to get started on many phases, all of the phases of the project, perhaps a little sooner than was planned, or at least was expected as of late. So the engineers have really had to get busy on, you know, for example, starting to look at easement acquisition down all the way to Alida and all the way to the Cap Rock. And so there's just a lot of activity going on with the Water Authority. We heard updates from our consultants, as well as from our administrator. And, you know, I'd just take a second and just need to tell this commission, you know, we're the 76% member of the Water Utility Authority. And let me tell you, we have a great administrator and staff over at the Authority, and they're doing just a great, great job in handling an awful lot right now. So I just want to let you know that we're in good shape there. Anything to add, Mayor Protem or Commissioner Garza?
No, nothing to add, Mayor. I think everything's going well, and we're moving along with construction. And everything's going well. Good report.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to remind of the workshop that we're going to have, Monday the 14th.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Garza. That's right. We were holding a workshop for the member communities. It'll be held here in the North Annex on Monday, the 14th, at 6:00 PM. And we're doing it at that time of day so that commissioners and counselors from our member communities are able to attend and understand as much as possible about what the local share, the 10% share, is going to look like for each of our communities. And Eric Harrigan from RBC Capital will be here and will be presenting his recommendations and answering questions. So thank you, Commissioner Garza. That is a key meeting. And Commissioners, I would encourage all of you, if possible, to please attend that because the local match, while it's just 10%, it becomes a big number on that big of a project. And so it's important that we understand what we're dealing with and have a great plan for how to cover that. So be aware of that meeting. Thanks, Commissioner Garza. And, you know, Mayor Protem, you said, as you were sort of wrapping it up, that construction is underway. I was out on the base yesterday, and as we drove along the West Fence Line, you can see our project underway. There, you know, there's pipe going in the ground from Cannon all the way down toward Potalas. And so we're really making progress. Thanks for that report. Next, Parks, Recreation, and Beautification Committee met on Monday, February 28th. Do we have a report on that?
I guess I messed up also.
Oh, come on.
I brought my notes. I brought my report. If I'd have known that, I could have passed it on to Justin Hawalt after. But I didn't. Anyway, we discussed and recommended regarding NHP Motor Speedway. We didn't do much on that because people, there was a people who were absent. You want to say anything on that, or you want to?
Certainly. Happy to elaborate. So we're, from an agreement standpoint with the Ned Hook Park Motor Speedway folks, we traditionally had had a concession agreement with them. And so Jared and I started to review different ways and different options with contracting with them. And instead of going with concession agreement, we've landed on the ability to maybe just enter into a lease agreement with them, which then would free them up to operate more of a, as a business versus like a 501(c), which would incentivize them to maybe not only bring events out there, but when you're profit-driven, you certainly are a lot more in tune with what your business is, what's occurring within there. So we're still working on it, still working with Mr. Harris and Mr., his partner. And so I plan to bring that back to the Parks and Recreation Committee in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion recommendation regarding the outdoor recreation trails. We went ahead and had a motion on that, and it was passed. And Claire, do you want to tell us anything about that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Commissioner Madrid, we did discuss the Recreational Trails Plus Grant and to apply for more trails out at Ned Hook Park. And actually, this afternoon, we have met with Farmington virtually, Julie Baird, the Assistant City Manager, and their economic development people who handled that grant application for their recreational trail. And we found out that it cost $7 million for the 93 acres. So we probably can't apply for that much because that's the entire amount the state has for available. So we were talking about, with Mr. Hawalt just before we came over here, about maybe going back to the planning piece that we were talking about originally for Ned Hook Park. So that's where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we had updates from Russell, new park superintendent, new recreation administrator, bleachers at Roy Walker, capital outlay, funding for playground equipment, and pickleball courts update. And then we also had a deal on the Pappy Museum. Claire, you want to tell us about the Pappy Museum?
Yes, certainly. Exciting news. Curry County received $200,000 during the legislative session, capital outlay, to make renovations at the area, at the fairgrounds. So they're hoping as soon as they receive those funds later on in the year to go ahead and make those changes so that we can begin with the new museum there. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it.
Well, that's a lot, Commissioner. Thank you. And Commissioner, if I may, I'd just like to pay you a compliment. I know that you have decided not to run for reelection, but you are not coasting. You're still busy with these committees and appreciate your work, and thanks for the report. Ms. Malonson, could I call in you for an election update?
Of course, Mayor. I just happened to bring my information. We did, we had one actual provisional ballot. So we did end up with 995 votes cast, which is a 5.14% voter turnout. So hopefully, citizens will realize that, yes, their vote matters and that one vote does count. So we will present the canvas to the County Commission on Tuesday, March 8th. And once that becomes almost official, then we will be submitting the request to the Secretary of State for the necessary automatic recount for the commission position in District 1. And then we'll be working with the Secretary of State's office on getting that scheduled and doing the full recount for that district vote, and then presenting that back to the county canvas for the final official official. And then that one will finish, and then we are working on getting things scheduled, finding our district judge to do the swearing-in on April the 1st.
Thank you for that. You said that there will be a recount on the District 1 race?
Correct. The state statute requires that any race that has less than a 1% margin between the contestants is an automatic recount, just to verify that the machines and everything worked as they should. And the county clerk and I both believe that they did. It's just the necessary steps that have to be taken.
Correct. And you said, did you say there was an updated total voter?
995. I had one provisional ballot that was accepted.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you for that. I can't help but be a little bit discouraged that, you know, only 995 folks decided to vote in our municipal election.
Of 19,327 registered voters.
Yeah. Commissioners, I can't be alone. I mean, we're working on good things and big things, and, you know, we have vibrant, active committees and boards, and I would just, I would expect that the public would have more interest than that. And, but we will, we will keep going. And I, perhaps in the second half of my term as mayor, I want to think of ways to have the community engage and get involved in the local process. I think it's so important that we be involved.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could ask Ms. Malonson a question. I don't know if you have this information available right now, but how does that compare with other municipal elections in the past?
Mr. Hawalt and I were, he had asked me that same question. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers with me, and we were trying to find one that didn't have a large, I mean, obviously, two years ago, we had the large pool of mayoral candidates. And unfortunately, every election for the last several years has had something in it that truly drew citizens out, either a mayoral election, the bond questions, we had contested mayoral, we had a contested municipal judge. So we normally run, I would say, between 17 and 19%. So it's substantially lower than. I mean, I think the number of total votes is less than the number of early votes that we had two years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, something I was going to add to that. Of course, we had two of us that didn't run, and there wasn't anybody running, whether it was in Fidel's. But, and there was no debate or any, nobody put signs out hardly or anything. And it just, people just didn't, I don't think, was, you know, wired up and ready to do anything. But I think that was a lot of it. And because I remember whenever the first time I ran, I mean, there was, we had signs everywhere, and we debated here, the radio station had us out and everything, and there was none of that. So that's probably a lot of it.
Was there not a candidate forum?
No. No. That was kind of strange because we've always had a candidate.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it, you know, it is what it is. And while I say that, you know, it's a little discouraging to me as mayor to see that low of a turnout, you know, we're not going to pout about it. I mean, it is what it is, and we're just going to continue to invite the public into the process. You know, when I hear from folks that have concerns about whatever it may be, my, my statement to them is always, you know, yes, let's meet and talk about that, but I want to invite you in to be closer to the information. You know, there's a committee for that. Come to the committee meeting and hear what's going on and meet the folks that are involved, and get involved yourself. You know, that's my message to members of the public. It's your city government. It's your city. You can be involved, and in fact, we need you to be. But that's enough of that. Thank you for that update.
If I could say, I think that people vote when they're upset or angry, and they're not upset and angry. The City Commission has done a great job, and the few questions on the ballot were not really thought-provoking or serious enough to get the voter out. Just, and like, we said, there wasn't that many candidates for contesting. So, you know, a few of my friends showed up and a few of my family, and pretty much the extent of it.
Right. Well, thanks for that and thanks for the positive spin on it that, you know, folks are generally happy with the job you're doing as a commission. And so they didn't turn out in large numbers. Very well. We will move on then to future agenda items. Do we have future agenda items to discuss?
The only item I have currently, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, is the presentation to the DEAP recipients for the quarter.
Okay.
But I guess we'll have the library policies and procedures on there again as well. Thank you.
Correct. Yeah, we did postpone that. That's right. Thank you for that. All right. Commissioners, any future agenda items that you have to bring up? Very well. We'll announce date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. Rogers Tax Advisory Board will meet at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 8th. Planning and Zoning Commission will meet at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, March 9th. The LITA for Retail Task Force will meet at 3:30 PM on March 7th in the Ingram Room of the library. Senior, yes, Senior Services Committee will meet at 3:00 PM on Thursday, March 10th, here in the North Annex. Civic Center Policy Committee will meet at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, March 15th. And our next city commission meeting is at 5:15 on Thursday, March 17th, here in the North Annex. Commissioners, thank you very much. We are adjourned. Commissioners, thank you very much, we are adjourned.